We couldn't even start the meeting without you, so.
Oh.
Glad you're here. Thank you.
Glad to be helpful.
Good. All right. Why don't we start? We'll go through. So we've got four folks who wish to speak. We've got until 6:15, so we'll break it down. It's probably about, I don't know, six, seven minutes each. We just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak and the same amount of time, just generally. So we'll do that and we'll, we'll just kind of work our way through our, our list of speakers here. So Kristen, why don't you, if you wanted to come forward and sign in and talk to us, we can get this started.
And how much is it for a speaker?
About seven minutes, I think.
Seven minutes.
Yeah. Be kind of close, but we'll be okay, I think. Good evening and welcome. If you could just identify yourself formally for the record, have a seat.
Okay, I'm just kind of trying to get some more information. I've been having issues with the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington police. I feel like I'm not being heard. I have made multiple police reports and never heard anything back. I've also talked to the city code guys and they're kind of giving me the runaround. I finally went up to the upper section, I think it's due Johnson. And he gave me a little bit of clarity, but we're, we're not getting anywhere. I'm not getting any answers from when I'm asking questions. I'm getting quite a few papers from the city of Bloomington and Bloomington police about certain things. But I'm not getting any responses, so.
Can you, can you fill us in just a little bit as much as you're comfortable, I think, about talking here?
I have some paperwork here that was just delivered probably a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago. About a nuisance call. My neighbors are calling on us. I can't control them. I feel like the things that they're calling on are very minimal. I've called, I guess, the one paperwork I don't have in front of me, but about liquid being poured over a fence. Okay, I understand, but our fence is set back on our property of six inches, like most places. When I call about them damaging my property, I have video of it. They're not doing anything about it. I've talked to multiple sergeants, multiple police officers. I've talked to this lovely lady over here and I'm not getting anywhere. I don't know what to do, so I am coming to you guys for you guys to give me some information or what I need to do to get some answers.
Well, without knowing all the details, and I'm sure they're.
And it's.
I know what you talked about.
You've got seven minutes.
Understood, understood. So what I would recommend, Kristen, is that you continue to work through the system. Because, I mean, to come to the, to the council here, that's a good step. Obviously, we're aware of it now. As we look around, we can, we can look at our city manager and ask that he work with the police chief to work with the police department to make sure that we do what we need to do or what is what we're able to do to move, move forward in terms of trying to solve your, your issues and your problems. And, but I would encourage you, that's probably the best way is just to continue to work through the system. I'm sorry you haven't got the answers that you feel you don't have the answers yet, or you feel you haven't made any progress on this. I know, I can be frustrating. I get that. I'm sorry about that.
And I keep getting fined, like these fines in the mail, and I try to talk to people and I'm not getting anywhere. So I'm still paying these fines that, you know, and I, it's very frustrating. So if I can get somebody's number or somebody's contact today, that would be awesome.
And, and have you been through any of the administrative law issue? You know, the, I think we've got an administrative law judge that helps us deal with some of these.
Administrative conference.
Administrative, thank you, thank you. Administrative, so we do it administratively, try to work through some of these, you know, if there's.
I haven't, so if I can get that information today, that would be awesome.
Okay, okay. Other suggestions?
Look at the form and see, it can circle. I'm pretty sure that number is on the form.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I would, I would suggest it, it sounds like it might be something that involves environmental health as well, perhaps. Excuse me, sorry. Perhaps, I don't know if you've spoken with Lynn Moore, environmental health.
Lynn Moore, sure.
In my experience, Lynn is always very good about walking folks through issues and explaining what hap, what's happening and why, and that sort of thing. So that might be worth a phone call.
Okay.
Well, will I be able to get that information somehow today?
Yes, we, we have the contact information.
Okay.
We'll follow up.
All right.
And, and I think if it's, if it's a variety of different things, you know, if you've been talking with environmental health, if you've been talking with the police, I think there might be a variety of different people that you ultimately need to connect with. And I know that can get confusing too.
I just need to know the right person to talk to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And, and I think we've got a couple of folks here who, if be able to help you to, to at least give you names and phone numbers or email addresses. So you can, you can direct your questions to them. And I really would encourage, if you, as you get those names, if you get that contact information, lay it out as succinctly as possible, the issue, and then ask the specific questions you want answered. The, the open-ended questions, you know, what do I do next? It's, it's a tricky one, but the specific questions that you want answered, it's usually the best way to get to the resolution of an issue.
Okay. I, I think that's, I mean, for the most part, that's probably it, because most of the stuff is all situational stuff that's going on and, and just being able to have the right person. Is there somebody at the police station then too, that I can talk to that? I've talked to investigators and everybody, so I mean, I guess I want to know who I specifically need to talk to as well on that one.
And again, those are probably the right people to talk to.
Okay, I just need their names, I guess.
Yeah, okay, okay. And I think, I think our folks from the police department, they can help you get specific names, who you have talked to in the past, what their contact information is, so you can follow up, try and get you some of the answers that you're looking for.
Okay, all right. Yeah, everything else is situational, pretty much.
I'm sorry, it's a, it's kind of a hassle and a runaround. It's, I understand it can get, it can get complicated sometime with all the different folks and with the different issues that might be going on, so.
Yeah, and you know, how long do you wait to hear back to? And do you guys recommend two, three weeks or?
It's usually not that long, but I can't say. I think it depends on the situation. Yeah, and it might be tricky as well.
Okay. So do I get a record of who I need to talk to? Because I'm not going to remember everybody.
Can, can you, can you step maybe out into the hall or into the next room and maybe just provide whatever information? Or at least take down what information she might be looking for and we can get, make sure we get back to her. And we have your contact information, either a phone number or an email address, so we can get back to you. Is that correct?
I can put my email address on here. That's it?
All right, thanks for coming.
You guys listening.
All right, thank you for coming. Thanks for taking care of that. Sally?
Hello?
Hello.
So at the last meeting, I mentioned previously speaking about my concern with the inaccurate description of a rope that was tied into an overhand loop knot. Bend it in half. Tie it up. And being described as a crude noose, that implies guilt. I then spoke about my concerns with the inaccuracy of the city and school joint statement in 2017 that Star Tribune reports was prepared in response to reports of intimidation or targeting immigrants in the city, which implies guilt when the data indicates the statement was prepared in response to the election results of 2016. Additionally, testimony was provided that the Star Tribune reported that they heard reports of isophobia in schools, Bloomington schools such as students pulling off heat jobs and, or head coverings of young girls. Note that the testimony is not a person that heard report. Note, the testimony is a person that heard reports, not that the person was the subject or witnessed racism or isophobia. When Bloomington Schools was asked about the report, the response was that there were no incidences of isophobia. I asked the council to address the concern of the inaccurate city reports and that the reports assume guilt and do not afford the right of innocent until proven guilty. After I spoke, the mayor commented about how they feel. I would like the mayor to explain how they feel justifies inaccurate reporting and specifically inaccurate reporting that assumes guilt. I would also like the mayor and council to explain how they can continue to state pictures of my, state pictures my attorney took at Smith Park ended up online when they did not. I've asked for proof, for a screenshot of a picture my attorney took that is online. I've not been provided any evidence. Regardless that, I was informed at the November 28th, 2022 meeting, city council meeting. I've been shown it, quote, "I've been shown it by several folks. I'll follow up with you after this. I'm going to provide that," end quote. Again, please explain how they feel justifies inaccurate reporting and how council can continue to state pictures my attorney took at Smith Park ended up online when they did not.
Mr. Mayor, I can address the second part since.
Please.
You don't mind?
Actually, it wasn't you that said.
It was Patrick who referred you on the 28th, but it was my original commentary.
Oh, okay.
Happy to address it.
Okay.
First off, I don't think people are continuing to state that. It was stated that one time and then you keep asking for the evidence. And so it's really you that is stating it over and over again. All I said was that information ended up online, right? Now, here's what I have, and I will happily give it to you, but I wasn't interested in figuring it out publicly because it's not very nice.
Right, I just need a screenshot of the.
I cannot, I'll be very candid with you. I cannot 100% without a doubt say whether or not the video that you can find on this website does or does not contain your photos. I cannot say that because I've never seen the photos that, that are in question. I will be very clear with you and say I cannot verify that. What I can tell you is based on this information that I'm happy to give to you that there are photos or, or more importantly, screen captures of the attorney, Larry Frost, that we talked about in that meeting back in the day. And also, your, your website in your blog post is explicitly quoted on the website. So that's what I know, and I'm happy to give this to you. And then you could do your investigation and watch the video to see if whether or not any of your pictures are there or not. I've never seen them, so I cannot say for certain one way or the other. What I can tell you is that all of the same information that's posted on your blog ends up in this video. And there are pictures of people at Darrell Farukh in this video. Cannot, cannot connect the two, and I'll be very clear about that.
The comment from the mayor was the pictures he took ended up online. And then the comment from council, we didn't say that he put them online. We said they ended up online, and I am telling you guys.
Fair enough.
They did not end up online. The pictures he, you, I gave you guys all screenshots that the executive director, principal of Success Academy put online of him at the park.
Totally understand.
So you could see him and you could see the park.
Totally understand.
And none of those pictures, nothing like that is online.
Like I said, I've never seen the pictures that you're referring to. I cannot say one way or the other. You can watch this video and you can tell us whether or not that.
And that's a good point. If you can't say one way or another, to have the city and council say that my attorney took pictures at Smith Park. I had him go to Smith Park because I have a concern about the city giving a private business the park, which removed me from the playground, me and my neighbors. And then to have council say the pictures he took that day ended up on a.
Is this, is this really what you want to address while you're here today?
The mayor said it.
Okay, council did not.
Then the council said they ended up online.
I did not say that, so.
I think you did.
I know exactly. Look, we can go back to the transcript if you want to, like, what I'm trying to.
I'm trying to get to accurate reporting.
And I'm giving you the most accurate report, complete with evidence of what I'm, I'm, I'm calling out.
She's giving you what you're asking for.
I am.
I asked for a picture of my attorney's pictures online. They are not online.
She is saying you can go watch that video and see, or maybe you've seen the video.
No, she just said that she cannot say they're online or not.
Because you've never seen, because I've never seen the pictures you're referring to, I can't tell you whether they're in here or not. And, but I can tell you that this video here has plenty of information and pictures of Darrell Farukh in it. So I need you to help with that, is what I'm getting.
I gave you help. I gave you a picture that that day, the executive director, principal took a picture of my attorney and the kids that were at the playground.
Folks, we're at six minutes now, so.
Any playground pictures?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Thank you.
I know, I, like I said, but you're welcome to look at it and let me know, okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, just a question before we go in between. What's the proper procedure here for being recognized, want to ask a question? Because I wanted to ask a question of you during that period of time, and I just.
Well, it's a little more informal. We, we, we're not, we're not, we're, it's an official meeting, but we're not down in the council chambers. Try and leave it a little more informal, so there's informal back and forth. I apologize for not getting to you. It's just a.
What I would ask is if there is any record of us taking a vote on the topic matter that she's talking about in terms of the council declaring that, that we said what she said, I'd like to see it, so.
It was just in the listening session on the 20th. I don't remember.
All right, Tiffany. Good evening. Inside and when you're done, why don't you just?
All right, I will. I can keep it snappy. Hello, my name is Tiffany Trout. I am a resident of Bloomington and my address is 3108 West 98th Street, your district. But I've got a couple of items. Started off pretty light. I would like to speak to you about, first, I would like to suggest that the Bloomington briefing, a list of local events the month and 15 days after the month of the issue, just because some of the time, the issue comes out two days later. I don't really care if it's late, but it'd just be nice to get more people at events in the community if you can actually see them. So my second item, I need you to know that not only am I resident of Bloomington, I am also a local 668 AFSC member, which is not Bloomington. But I would like to speak to you today as our elected officials who are accountable to the residents and responsible for ensuring our city staff are taken care of so that they can do their job effectively to improve our city. I am a taxpayer in our community and I want to make sure my tax dollars go to our amazing staff and ensure that they are treated fairly and with respect. I am particularly unsettled by the actions of our city's top appointed leaders after an arbitration award that was publicly posted between the city and the city workers. Once you read the award, you will see that it highlights the city failed to treat staff equitably regarding COVID-19 pay. The disturbing trend that our top city leaders are not paying sta, our staff fairly as highlighted issues in our city's union members and have had with top city leadership. This much must change. As elected officials, I want to remind our city council members and our mayor that you earned AFSC's endorsement. And we need to live up to our union values in all ways. We need to work together to improve our city, close inequity gaps and invest our city workers and build a better community. I encourage you to please discuss this arbitration and have it placed on the agenda so elected officials can read and understand the decision and highlights in the award. And Annie should have highlighted copies of that. So I see all the time back to the Bloomington briefing how we are always trying to make this a fair and equitable place. We have pride in Bloomington. Is that not to include everybody? We have lots of events that are trying to bring everybody in. A key part of our city that every single one of you have pretty much talked about is having equitable housing. Why are we not treating our staff the same way you want to treat the residents? If you cannot treat your staff in-house fairly, how do you expect me to trust you to treat us? Because if you can't figure it out on your own, you're not going to be able to figure it out with us. So I ask you to bring this up on the agenda and discuss what has happened in arbitration because that is unfair and is ridiculous, to be quite frank, but thank you.
Are you asking for us to bring it up on the agenda this evening?
This evening, yes.
I would hesitate to do that because we don't have it here in front of us and we haven't noticed it. And it's not a problem. We, we generally have to notice these things to let, to let people know what's on our agenda. So we'll, we'll have that discussion internally whether or not we, we bring it up. And if we do, it would have to be in the future. We couldn't do it this evening.
I would suggest not pushing forward any union settlements until you have all read the arbitration. It is something that as elected officials, you might not necessarily see because union negotiations are kind of on the city side of things, and speaking from experience. But as something, you should see it before you push forward with the rest of this.
Del Sandro?
Yeah, I believe we do have a consent item related to that tonight, right? No, why did I, what, what did I read this week? I feel like I read something this week.
We did. Mr. Mayor and council members, we did send out a copy of the arbitrator's award for you to read.
Okay, but we don't have any item on the agenda tonight.
The contract, so the arbitrator, you know, the arbitrator's decision, we're bound to follow that. So when the contract is ready to be signed and approved, we will bring it in front of city council. And we don't have that on the agenda.
Okay, and we'll have, we'll have read that by then. Does that satisfy your concerns?
As long as you're reading it, that is all I ask.
And let me ask, Mr. Verugi, you said we're bound to follow it. Was it binding arbit, arbitration?
Yes, interest arbitration.
So it was binding interest arbitration. Does it sound negotiable?
So there, from what I understand, there is a part that is not necessarily binding, but urging you guys to look at the inequities in good faith. So pushing forward with the negotiations now without kind of looking at that good faith effort might not be the best idea. You should be looking at the whole picture because there are some things in there, you know, that are beyond existing contract, obviously. So, and the arbiter didn't have authority to say you need to do this to fix it. It was, so, okay.
Sorry, that was my understanding, is that it was, it referred to different pays, pay scales related to city attorneys?
Yes, attorneys.
Or future contracts rather than the one that was arbitrated.
Okay.
All right, we're at six minutes, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Josh?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Josh. I'm a resident of Bloomington. And I'm here today, frankly, in response to the last listening session. There was a lot of judgmental language involved, hypocritical language. And I appreciate your response to it. I do appreciate it. And I find it really disturbing that frankly, we're, we're still dealing with the fallout from the COVID George Floyd incident and leading to more attacks and more instances of anti-Semitic behavior, Islamophobic behavior and homophobic behavior. So I just want to give a few words, kind words. So this is a record. And those who are displaying this Islamophobia, anti-Semitic behavior and homophobic behavior, this is your legacy that you're leaving. These are the words that will be forever. And frankly, when you're in the ground, that's your legacy. So I want to counteract that with these words, and I'll be brief. Golden eras are a myth. Don't believe the party was a better 15 minutes before you arrived. Your dance floors can survive the apocalypse, but your spaces are always in danger. Love your bars and love your pictures often. You come from poets but lack the vocabulary for shame and addiction. Don't drink on an angry stomach. Queerness is not an immunity to white supremacy. If anything, it is a blind spot. You owe your slaying to black women. You'll sacrifice too much for masculinity and not be told enough how beautiful your femininity is. You don't need to be a slave of the gym to be loved. If your body is all you have to offer, you'll always come up short. COVID-19 is the second pandemic. AIDS was not a punishment, it was neglect, just like COVID-19. Homophobia is rooted in jealousy. Yes, it gets better, but also impossible in ways you cannot imagine because this world lacks the imagination for people like you. Entire religions have called you their end and drained you of their deities. But there'll always be enough Sundays for your creed divinity, and I wish you a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Couple of folks came in after we kind of set the lineup here this evening. Is there anybody else looking to speak? Andy, come on up.
What about sweater, mayor?
Thank you.
So real quick, in a, in a, in a meeting, a couple, a couple meetings ago, Jenna asked about the, the rope, the firefighter, the crude noose, I should say. And I want to know, Mr. Verugui, did any firefighters actually see, see that, that crude noose rope in the entire fire department? Anybody know about, did anybody see a copy or did anybody see a picture of the rope? Or was it just one person succinctly, according to two?
So the firefighter who found it.
On 15th.
Shared it with the department leadership.
And it went out, found it on the 15th? It sounds like it was reported as a story on the 23rd. So this is a national story that went out. Bloomington mayor Bussey said a piece of rope tied into what appears to be a crude noose was discovered in the gear locker of a black firefighter in June 15th of 2020. Acts like, and then acts like this embody hate, intimidation and aggression will not be tolerated. Bloomington chief Yuli said, and this is all national news, right? So for over two years, this was investigated by the FBI. This was turned over by the city to the FBI, right? And so the fire department regularly ties knots, right? And the, and the noose is not one of the knots, right? The board of knots?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
The fire department has what's called a board of knots, right? And the noose, the crude noose, or the noose is not one of the knots that the firefighters tie regularly, right? The overhand knot is one of the knots the fire department regularly ties, right? And so they're all trained in knot tying, including the chief, fire chief, right? So did anyone in the fire department know this is an overhand knot and not a crude noose?
So what maybe.
I'm just saying, did anyone in the fire department know if this is an overhand knot, not a crude noose?
Said before, Andy, the firefighter perceived it to be a crude noose. The firefighter perceived it to be a potential threat. As an employer, we have an obligation to investigate and respond to that.
The firefighter can perceive a lot of stuff. I live in a world of truth, right? A perception and reality are two different things, right? This is an overhand knot, not a crude noose, right? Did anyone in the city council see a picture of that, that knot? The overhand, I'm going to call it the over, I'm going to call it an overhand knot.
I did, Andy. And you know, and I, you know how I responded?
Out there that's.
Andy?
Not.
Andy, good question.
Would you like me to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Echoing what Mr. Verugui said, if one of our firefighters felt threatened by that, felt intimidated by that, felt it was a crude noose in his service locker, he is one of our employees.
Accuracy in the city reporting.
He is one of our employees and we will do what we need to do.
Knows what a knot is.
To protect him.
And when it comes to harassment, perception does matter.
It does, yeah.
When it comes to harassment, perception does matter. And that's what we.
Does the council know that it's an overhand knot and not a crude noose? It went out as a crude noose.
Matters, how was it perceived?
It mattered, yeah, two years ago.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Was put out there, right?
What would you want with this conversation?
So, so basically, the fire department's not going to come forward with any kind of information. If they would have saw this right away, they would have known right away.
So what you're saying is you're, you're disagreeing with our firefighter.
It's inaccurate, is what I'm asking about.
A, a public safety official in, in, at the.
It's an accurate story by the city and it should be corrected.
So this was two years ago. Why are you?
Doesn't matter.
Why is, why is?
Two years ago. I got a copy from Mr. Verugui, and when I saw that knot.
I mean, we need to go, so I, I need to know, I need you to, so you're disagreeing with the perceptions, the belief, the.
I'm disagreeing with what the city put out there.
Well, we just.
You're responding to what we heard from our employee, Andy. So you're.
Do I think the moon's got a green cheese or what?
You're saying that our public safety employee is.
Why are you so angry?
I'm sitting here very calmly. I don't understand why you're yelling at.
It's an overhand knot, folks.
It was perceived.
It was.
One of our firefighters to be a threat.
But where's the investigation?
Andy, we handed it over to the FBI. We didn't do the investigation.
Well, do I have to request data of the FBI?
Don't worry, I think you should spend your money on that.
They have a, do they have a knot-tying expert? So what I'm asking here, they're going to have, the fire department knows knots.
If a black firefighter who knows knots perceived a threat, then we would take that seriously because a guy who knows knots felt something different.
Should know a knot, thank you.
And he knows, and he knows what he saw.
A guy who knows a knot, knows a knot, and they're certified and tying.
And so why these, came to us saying that he perceived it to be a threat. So you're disparaging.
Talking about accurate reporting from the mayor, is what I'm talking about.
Heard from.
Using a fire, real feeling.
No, no.
A man of service.
I'm not talking about feelings. I'm talking about facts here.
Yes, you are.
No, you're not.
I'm not having the facts.
You're saying that the black firefighter.
All right, we're past time, folks.
I shouldn't have felt the way.
Inaccurate, past a wild discussion. Accurate reporting. Second, second.
A second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Not okay, Andy.
Not okay, Andy, man.
It's really sad that you're.